I'd like to get everyone seated if we could. We're going to get started here in a minute. Before... That's better, thank you. In accordance with open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. Everyone please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for being here tonight, especially our guests from Andover. Thank you for making the trip up here. Especially, I know you had an earlier meeting. Yeah, no, we understand. We have our busy season coming ahead of us with our budgets, so... So I thought I would just maybe start things off, just to reiterate to the public why we're having this meeting this evening, make sure everyone home listening, and make sure we get it for the record. Is that we did attend your town meeting, your special town meeting, and unfortunately there was a change in your warrant article requested by the voters, and it did pass, which sort of forced us to be here this evening to understand the way forward. And the one area was in an opt-out that we, in previous negotiations with our subcommittee members, was taken off the table because for this board unanimously that was the biggest concern for us, and we know from your subcommittee members, they understood that and we appreciated that. But unfortunately, that got changed by the voters in Andover, and here we are today. I would, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Slavvia, just introducing your board?
Sure. I'm Paul Slavvia, the chairman of the board. Alex Vespoli, who is the vice chair, and Laura Gregory, who's on the original negotiating team with us. Unfortunately, we have one member who is in New York on business and another, a family member, for some reason, could not make it. Andrew Flanagan, our town manager, and John Montaretti, our deputy town manager.
Thank you. So I thought the goal for tonight's meeting, the way we put it together would be to give you, now we know we have this issue on the table, which is an opt-out that we have to address, and you have the agreement we had in principle, we didn't have the opt-out and now we do. And we're hoping this evening you had an opportunity to come and speak to us and tell us what your thoughts are for a solution to that, if there is a solution to that, and the best way forward and how we deal with it. So I'd like to turn it over to you. We're here to listen this evening, that's the main thing. We want to understand what your thoughts are and a path forward, if there is one.
Paul, you might want to just move the mic closer to you.
So let me just open by saying, and we've been meeting a little bit, and Andrew has been meeting with his staff on the side, and we've been talking about a path moving forward. So I'm going to turn that over to Andrew so that he can detail that. But let me just say, let me express to you that this board is unanimous in our desire and our hope that we can come to an agreement. I think, we think it's very, very beneficial for both towns, and we believe that there is a path forward, and we'd like to be able to, we're here tonight to certainly explore that, and we are hopeful that by the time we leave here that we can at least have some next steps moving forward. So I'm going to move and turn it over to Andrew Flanagan. He's got his own mic.
I've got my own. Thank you Chairman Slavvia, and thank you Chairman Prisco and the members of the North Reading Board for having us this evening. I'm pleased we're all using the same theme word, "pathway." The document I presented to the board at 5:00, the title was "A Pathway Forward," because I think certainly speaking for Andover, that is really what the ultimate goal is for us as we continue on a path that we started years ago at this point. You were at our special town meeting, so we don't have to rehash the outcome, but since that day, we've really worked to try to turn in what was a disappointment into an opportunity. It was a disappointment for us. We put a lot of hours into it, as I think all of you know, and we now, moving forward, would like to see it turn into the opportunity that I think we all believe it can be. So what have we done since then? We've met internally a number of times, really focusing on two things. One, in responsive to the concerns of North Reading, and one responsive to the concerns of Andover ratepayers. With regard to North Reading, we've heard you loud and clear, the concern of permanency. I tried to make that clear to the Andover town meeting. We understand that concern, and we've taken a shot at coming up with some scenarios that may be acceptable in the appropriate form to discuss with you. And then we've talked about internally, some of the, how we meet the concerns of our ratepayers in a way and a fashion that would be acceptable to the parties, the parties of course being Andover and North Reading. So we've been having those discussions. The Board of Selectmen here in Andover have met three times. We've received the feedback and have worked that into our internal discussions as we've talked about our pathway forward. So based on that, we looked at, really in silos, what are our options? There are two votes. There's a vote from your town meeting to file a home rule petition, and there's a vote from our town meeting to file a home rule petition that of course looks different than yours. So based on the input I've received from board members, I'm inclined, and I've discussed this with the board at 5:00, I'm inclined to request that the Board of Selectmen in Andover reopen the warrant on Monday, this Monday, and submit a warrant article for reconsideration or consideration, because it will look much more like the initial article for the annual town meeting, which is scheduled for April 30th. I know that is a sensitive date for you, as it is the date that was outlined, I believe, to your town meeting when we were in attendance when this was initially presented at the high school. What our goal is, is to be able to discuss language with you to determine general parameters that are acceptable to both communities, and then move forward with seeking approval, having two consistent home rule petitions, and be able to stand by the general terms and conditions that we worked years on. And thank you to all the people in the room who spent a great deal of time working on those, and then really focus in on the outstanding issues, which, is there any appetite to talk about? We've discussed opt-outs, we've talked about renewals, we've talked about all different concepts that we could consider that protect you and help you achieve permanency. We heard from, I believe, every one of our selectmen, and please correct me if I'm wrong this evening, that there's an openness to permanency. And I think that's unanimous on our side, and it's just how we do it. And I think we have some creative approaches to meet the demands from, the demands or the concerns of our residents. We are afforded some information today that we weren't when we headed into the special town meeting. We've relived the special town meeting, we've watched the tape over and over and over, and we've heard the concerns, we've listened to concerns, and we think we can answer the questions that we didn't anticipate that evening. They were well thought out. We, as an administration, are very much committed to a grassroots, public outreach education campaign, morning, afternoon, and evening. That's aggressive, that's thorough, that meets the demographics of the community, and that would begin immediately. So what I would like to do this evening is ask the North Reading, respectfully ask the North Reading Board to consider meeting as soon as possible in a negotiating team fashion like we've had, and that worked well, and begin working on really what I see as the missing piece. We're sensitive to your timeline, we have a timeline too. I think we could talk about our timeline if that is of interest to you, but we're certainly prepared and are willing to align the appropriate resources to move as quickly as necessary. So that is where we stand. Selectman Gregory, I don't know if you have anything to add?
I just wanted to add a few things. First of all, I want to apologize. I think that all of us were frustrated with how things played out at our town meeting, and I think there were a lot of statements that weren't frankly very neighborly. And there were concerns by individuals in town, which were valid concerns, but I think they weren't characterized in a way that was particularly friendly, and I apologize for that. I'd also like to note that I did get up, spoke at the pro-mike, and argued on my own behalf that the town should do this, and I continue to think that this is a great deal for the town of Andover and the Andover ratepayers, and I think it's a good deal for North Reading as well. And I'm hopeful that we can come to a resolution of the difficulties that were created by our town meeting, and that there are ways that we can address some of those concerns while still giving North Reading what you need. So I hope that we can do that, and I thank you for your willingness to speak to us tonight, and I continue to be optimistic that we can try and work together to get a benefit that will be good for both of our towns and our residents going forward. Thank you.
And I will just add, there's a lot of energy behind this in our community right now, and I think everybody at this table can attest to that. There's a lot of energy behind the idea and the concept of a deal with North Reading. I didn't see it so much the first time around, but it's certainly there now, and I think we have a real opportunity to capture that leading into the annual town meeting. So we've had the great fortune of providing your town with water for the past 44 years, and hopefully we can, not us, but there'll be people here that celebrate it at 144 years. So, thank you.
I think also, Selectman Schultz attended our meeting this evening, and I'm sure you heard that our board was very, is very, very behind, all five of us, very behind, even Dan from Colvin from New York, wanting to give you the permanence that you need and want while we try to address some of the things that our community is dealing with. So it's just, I guess it's important that you know that we, not only the board, but as Andrew said, there's an awful lot of energy and impetus behind us all coming to an agreement. So, thank you.
So I guess I have somewhat disappointment tonight, because when we put this together, maybe I set myself up for disappointment, maybe it was just a lack of communication and understanding from our part. We thought we were going to get a proposal from you tonight that would give us a path to get to where we want to be. And so just to make sure I understood what you're proposing, is you're asking to go back to another town meeting and ask us to wait for that. You're going to reopen the article up for another town meeting. Your openness for permanency, but you're still going to keep an opt-out on the table. And you're going to start a public outreach campaign that you didn't start before, and you're requesting more subcommittee meetings after over three years of subcommittee meetings? We're going to just continue subcommittees? That's what's being proposed for this meeting tonight? Is that the approach that we're looking for?
I think Chairman, we've got the town meeting vote in place, so we're operating under that. So if, I think the point is anticipating if we can come up with something that may be different from that proposal, that we go back to our town meeting, because we can't just, I think we're in a situation, we can't just change it without having the ratification from town meeting. So we were looking to say, okay, if we can come up to something that changes that, because we understand that that's a, an issue for your board, and I can certainly appreciate that based on the permanency, that we're looking forward and saying, okay, optimistically that we can come up with something that would be favorable to both communities, then to do that procedurally, mechanically, we'd have to go back to our town meeting to change that vote, or to get a vote in the affirmative on that. So that's from a timeline perspective, you know, we're also, because we'd have to, right? If it was out, or it was changed or modified in any way, we'd still have to go back to our voters and get that, get that re-voted. So that's the discussion that Andrew brought around, made allusions to that. The other thing that we could do is call a special town meeting at any time, given whatever the parameters are, and it came up actually in our meeting tonight, but one of our outspoken citizens brought that up and said, you know, if we need to do something sooner, you know, we could call a special town meeting, and the Board of Selectmen can do that with so many days' notice, if, you know, if you look at the timeline, because I think our annual town meeting is set for the 30th of April. So just looking at the time, so that's the, we're looking in advance and saying, okay, if we did come to an agreement that was different, because I assume it would be, based on the response, and you were, we heard the feedback, and you were on our meeting, that if we can come to something that would change that materially, we have, we'd be obligated to go back and get that, get that vote from our town meeting.
And procedurally, what would happen is it would match your town meeting vote. So we would have, both town meeting votes would work exactly the same, but we would add to our town meeting a list of, the term sheet that we already have, that we've worked very, very hard on for many, many months, to your point, years. All we need, and we have it, to Alex's point, that we have to address that one point, which is an opt-out. We have to address that in our town. So that's what we're hoping, that this little bit of time, where we have some subcommittee, we could have additional subcommittee meetings to try to work those, just that one thing out. We would add the term sheet with the new proposal worked out at, during this time period, and bring that to town meeting. So you wouldn't have to go to your town meeting, because yours would still stand, ours would be a 99-year agreement, but with this, this term sheet added to it.
So the strategy would be, you've got to go back to another town meeting with the initial approach that we had already agreed on going to this previous special town meeting, and try it one more time?
With a change, I mean, we'd want to get something that was amenable to both parties.
Which, and what change is that?
Well, to address the out, right, to address the issue that came up.
So when we went to your special town meeting, the opt-out clause wasn't there?
Wasn't there at all.
So what you're saying is you want to go back again, one more time, with the same terms and conditions and the agreement in principle that we had, and try it one more time?
No, no, but we would add that one, in that time period, we would be working with, working together to agree on an out clause of some sort that is agreeable to you and to us.
Okay.
And that would be added to it.
That's just one, okay, so it's clear. So an opt-out clause will be part of what you go to your town meeting with?
I think our town meeting was pretty clear about it.
Our town meeting vote does not have an opt-out clause.
The discussion would be, I don't know if you...
The warrant article would not reference an opt-out clause, or any language that differs from yours. What it would allude to is the same language that authorizes the Board of Selectmen to enter into terms and conditions. Those terms and conditions would include any language with regard to termination, any risk provisions, any language that would be typical of an IMA, similar or not dissimilar to the existing IMA. So what we would do to our town, with our town meeting is just reference those before they take the vote, but the language of the warrant article would be no different than yours.
Thank you for explaining. So the terms of the, of the agreement won't be necessarily in the warrant article, but the terms that we're going to be negotiating between the subcommittee and then voted against us jointly will include an opt-out of some sort that's going to be negotiated between the two subcommittees, is the strategy you're proposing.
Correct. The town meeting would be authorizing the Board of Selectmen.
So you are asking us to accept an opt-out tonight? That's the strategy?
I'm requesting, or respectfully requesting, that you be willing to come back to the table in a format that is similar to what has worked in the past, and discuss some language, whether it be an opt-out, a renewal clause. I don't know exactly what it's looked like. We've come up with some ideas that we'd like to share with you, but the exact language, necessarily an opt-out, I don't know exactly what it'll look like when the parties come together, but have a conversation.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay? Questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may. When I attended you guys' meeting earlier tonight, there was talk, and it might have been Selectman Kowalski, so I may not have been one of you three guys, there was talk about not having an opt-out, but having renegotiation points at maybe 10-year intervals or what have you, during that 99-year term. But wouldn't that kind of be the same thing as an opt, what if we didn't agree on a renegotiation? What would be the mechanism for settling that dispute? To me, that would be the same thing as an opt-out, but the different term was used. I was just wondering, maybe I didn't understand it, what was the thought?
That was Selectman Kowalski, so I'm not...
I took, I took that as a potential renewal, and I'll follow up with Selectman Kowalski when I have an opportunity to.
It just seemed like one of the same to me, just called something different.
Well, it seems, it seems to me that the idea of that, I think that Dan was suggesting as a more general idea, but if it were something we could discuss, for example, what parameters would be renegotiated, it might not be everything, it could be a portion of it, or things like that, that, or in the form of a renewal, like ways that we could work with and sort of put our, you know, brainstorming hats on to figure out different options that might work for the two towns to allow us to go forward, while recognizing that we need to get a town meeting vote in Andover, and that there are concerns about the length of the contract as it stands. So I think if we can come up with a few things that would work for both parties, that we could hopefully convince our voters to go along with. I also want to say that I have certainly been receiving, and I believe all the selectmen have, a number of communications from individuals in Andover who are very eager for us to enter into this contract with you. So there may have been some negative voices that you've heard, but there have certainly been lots of positive voices. You heard a few today at our meeting.
Any other voices at town meeting?
No, no, at our, so I think there is a desire, and maybe a better understanding of the implications of the deal now than there was that evening, which is too bad that it didn't happen in the right timeframe, but we're optimistic that we can work with a lot of the people in town and get them educated on the particulars, so that when we go to our vote, we'll be able to be successful.
Mr. Missary.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but at your town meeting, it seemed like a lot of people really didn't understand some of the details of the preliminary agreement. And one I thought was very significant, and why maybe people were saying we have to have an opt-out, was that it wasn't really expressed that, with the exception of the first 10 years, as the Andover water rate increased, we would get billed accordingly, at the 95% of whatever the rate is on that given year, past year 10. And it seemed like that whole piece was missing, with people thinking that, you know, we're going to get stuck, and if the water rate goes up, North Reading's even going to gain even more. That's how it came across to me.
I would agree that that wasn't...
Absolutely wrong, but...
That wasn't captured in the discussion. I think there was an assumption that it may be fixed over time, and that's a perfect example of something we learned through the discussion and will be, you know, paramount in our educational materials as we move forward.
Michael, can I continue?
Yes, please continue, Mr. Missary.
So I've been involved directly with negotiations associated with the five-year term, which took us, and the intent at the time was a 20-year term. It took several years, and we got nowhere, and then, you know, when we started talking about, well, can we buy all the water from Andover, and we were told flatly at the time, no, which resulted in the five-year agreement. But it was, it's, one of the other issues that goes through our mind is, we want to get this done, move forward, both communities clearly will benefit. So how did we get stuck with what we got stuck with? And is there a clear path to go beyond? You've got an election coming up, there could be a change in the board, they may come in with different ideas. Right at the time when we're trying to close on this thing, we set originally an April date to make a final decision. And, you know, here we are tonight, and we may make a decision to go forward with MWRA at our next meeting, and, you know, how do we, how do we get to where we are, to something forward that our entire board can buy into? And what are the risks, and how do we deal with them? Because there's nothing to say that when you take it to a special town meeting, or your regular town meeting coming up, that the town meeting is going to buy into it. And, you know, I think that message, the information didn't get out there in time, and it wasn't spoken to at the meeting. And, you know, I've been on the board here for 14 years, and I think some of you have been to our town meeting, and, you know, we try to be very prepared, and the board will get up and speak for anything that is put in there that it wants. We don't always win, but we clearly make an attempt to get the community to understand why we're doing it. And that was the biggest disappointment I had at your town meeting.
I think initially, we probably should have many, we should have had several more. We did have what we call a mid-year review, and it was an extensive meeting, and 50% of the meeting was all North Reading water, and it was all articulated in a very, in a much more relaxed atmosphere than obviously in a special town meeting. So, yeah, we need to learn from that, and we have two months in which to do that. Those two months, you know, we would be, I believe we learned a, that we need to go on an extensive education piece to the community, many more meetings than we had. Now, we had several Board of Selectmen meetings that people go to and can watch, but we still have, we should have more special meetings, we should have, no question about it. It's certainly our hope that this mechanism, we believe that we can come to, to resolve that one piece. And that's all we really want. I mean, I don't think we need to look at all of these terms again, unless, of course, we want to, but I don't, I don't think that's entirely necessary.
I think that's different than what I heard from Mrs. Gregory. Ms. Gregory, I think you said, just to quote you, you want to reopen other terms. You said, your words were reopen the negotiations and talk about other terms.
If I'd said that, I totally misspoke. I did want to...
Which, another flag for me.
To reopen the negotiations, in that I want to continue the discussion, because we need to go past what we already have. I am not at all suggesting that we need to renegotiate what we have. I was involved in these negotiations, and I argued for them at the town meeting. I think we should stick with them, and that we can just add hopefully a few tweaks and a little bit extra, so that we can get it passed through our town meeting, send this up to Beacon Hill to get our home rule petition, so we're ready to go. That, and I'm sorry if I misspoke.
No, no, it's okay.
That was not my intention, so thank you for mentioning it, so I could clarify. Thank you.
The goal tonight was, you were supposed to come here and make us an offer, and I'm trying to make sure we capture what you're offering, clearly, because I don't want to pot ways this evening and us not be on the same page. So, Mr. Missary, I would like to give Mrs. Meniopelli an opportunity, and I'd like to come back to you. Good. Mrs. Meniopelli.
I just, I, I'm, I don't think throwing it back into a subcommittee is the best option here, especially because we're televised, we have members of the public here, we have members of the public wondering what's happening with this. So I guess I would like to hear right now, while we're all together, or while some of us are here, what the creative options are that you are thinking could address your townspeople's issues. And I think resoundingly, it was clear to me at the town meeting that they don't want a long-term deal, they don't want to bind, I think they said three decades, three generations of townspeople to this contract with North Reading. So resoundingly, that was abundantly clear. So I'd like to hear what you have, what you think are the creative options you might be able to address that, those issues now, while we're here.
And absolutely correct. I think the, I think it wasn't the term, it was the fact that there's, if something catastrophic happened.
Yes, right.
So there wasn't, in fact, the, it passed 700... So there wasn't, in fact, it passed 700 and some odd to 300 and something to go forward with the 99-year deal. The only amendment that was made was for the out opportunity.
I guess I would take, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I guess I would take that amendment in and of itself, which resoundingly passed, to, as a statement that there is an opt-out. After 15 years, we notify you're out at 20. So it is not a long-term thing. So how would we, what do you think we, what do you have to offer regarding that? I guess, what do you have to offer us to secure this long-term for us? And not have to keep coming back every 20 years, and then five years after that, and five years after that, to go through this process, which took five years to get to the IMA in the first place?
Well, I think that's what the issue is, with me at least, what they're saying tonight. And that's why I went back and made sure I understood clearly. They're not, they're not prepared to do that. They're not asking to do that. They're asking for another town meeting, wait until April 30. They want to reopen up the subcommittee meetings and have some kind of discussion about a form of a termination clause that they will negotiate. And then between all that, try to do some public outreach. That's what's being proposed.
Can we, do you, can you speak to that? I think maybe, give us some, give us what your thought is on it. Tell it now, instead of going back into a subcommittee, and we're going back right back into that same process.
If I may, Chairman Prisco, what I would like, with regard to the summary of the ask, if you will, I was hoping to begin your accurate, as you described the request, a meeting, one subcommittee meeting, preferably as early as Monday, to go over this detail. I prefer to discuss it at that level. I can talk in concept of what we've been kicking around, but I have not discussed it with the Andover Board of Selectmen. We've discussed it as staff. I had hoped to discuss it in the form of a subcommittee format. I'm not looking to set up eight meetings. I'm looking to set up one to discuss it and be able to bring it back to your board as early as Monday evening, if there's a willingness. I mean, we've worked 18 months so far, and I think we are close, and I think we do have something that would be worthy of consideration.
I'm going to give you my honest opinion. I think the subcommittee was an epic failure. I apologize, but it was an epic failure. Tonight is the night. I'm a little disappointed we don't have all five board members from Andover here, because Ms. Meniopelli is correct. All 10 of us are prepared tonight to have this conversation. You know, I don't want to put my two subcommittee members through any more of time away from their businesses, their families, and their jobs, and their things that they have going on, because what we've done so far hasn't worked out, because look at how your town meeting turned out. We clearly were on two different paths, and I'm not sure where the breakdown came from. But I will tell you, I look anybody in the eye and say, the two members from our subcommittee came back to us during the day, phone calls, emails. At this meeting, they kept us so up to speed on what was going on. And when we went to town meeting, I felt so prepared, and that we knew where every stone was and where it needed to be. We knew where everybody was on the same page. And then when we went to yours, we didn't see that. And now what you're asking for us to do is wait another meeting till you do it again on Monday. If that process didn't work then, I can't see it working on Monday. And we're here now. We gave up our time again with our families, and you gave up your time with your families to be here. So let's take advantage of the opportunity, and let's figure this out right now. Because we're going to a meeting on Monday, and we're making the decision. And you've kind of painted us in a corner to really, not work this out without your other two board members here. It's really difficult. Really, I would, I feel bad that they're not here, because we're going to have a conversation, maybe even agree on something, and they're not here. How's that going to go? But probably said too much. I had to be honest with you.
All right, so I will tell you, or at least discuss in principle or in concept, what we have talked about internally with regard to an opt-out clause. I will talk, full disclosure, that this has not been vetted by the Andover Board of Selectmen, but we can have a collaborative discussion. We went back to the initial opt-out language that was drafted at the time by Selectman Gregory. If you recall, it was back in August of 2017, when we were looking at any party that opted out would receive or pay a penalty of five years revenue. So we went back to that as a starting place and acknowledge that the burden is greater on you if we were to opt out than it is on us, whereas we own the resource. You know, we're the producer, you're the consumer. Therefore, we thought we could revisit that and be willing to discuss what the value is of the penalty, the value, the amount of the penalty for each side. But if Andover was to opt out, they would pay X. If North Reading was to opt out, they'd pay Y, with Andover's opt-out being more significant than North Reading's, with the understanding and the reasoning being that we own the resource. So that was the basis for where we were headed, and what we would have talked about and presented in a subcommittee setting. So again, we're doing this in an open session, and that makes things a little bit more complicated, but I would look for feedback from North Reading. Oh, if I could add one more thing.
Oh, absolutely.
We could discuss that this would kick in after a period of time. So the first opportunity would be after 25 years. Why 25 years? We could enter an agreement today between parties, the respective Board of Selectmen, for 25 years.
Mr. Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Maybe, if I may, if I could just throw out one of my concerns to you guys, and if you guys could address what I think is a concern for North Reading is, let's say there's an opt-out agreement in here, and let's say, pick a time, 20 years, 25 years, what have you. And water prices, for whatever reason, go up. It's not working for Andover, so on. You guys opt out, and then we have to hook into the MWRA. My concern is, what is that going to cost us then? It's already pretty expensive to go hook up with them now. What kind of protection can you guys give us where if we hit that? And the other thing with the penalty provisions are, you guys have twice the population, more of a tax base than we do. So you're able to pay the penalty a lot easier than we can, meaning $10 million to you is not the same as $10 million to us, as a proportion of your yearly budget. I'm just worried 20 years from now, we have to hook up with the MWRA. It's going to be astronomical what the cost is. What protections can you give North Reading where if we run into that issue, we're going to get some help? That's the biggest concern.
Good question. So conceptually, again, you would be seeing some greater value. So let's say, and again, I'm talking in theory, if we opted out, or if you opted out from us, you'd pay a one-year penalty. I'm just using numbers. If we opted out, we'd pay you two-year penalty. So you'd get a year free of water that you could put towards whatever revenue you chose to follow towards an alternative water source.
We really only have one alternative water source at that point, MWRA. I mean, logistically.
Unless it's 75 years from now, who knows? I mean, but...
My point is, though, what is, I don't know what the cost of that's going to be. I mean, none of us, none of us do, obviously. But I don't think we have enough protections for our town in case that eventuality comes. And I understand your voters' reluctance to enter into a 90, I get it. I'm just thinking of my voters. They, I've gotten so many calls, emails, why is this taking so long? This has been going on for seven years. I don't really have a good answer for them. We're kind of back to square one a little bit tonight. I just, we would need some protections to, for the Armageddon scenario for us, I don't know what it would cost to go to MWRA in a year, 2040. And I don't think a couple of years of revenue is going to, it could be a drop in the bucket for us at that point. That's my concern. We're going to be in a real bind at that point. That's what we have to protect against, is our town. So I don't know if there are any common ground we can reach on that issue, but that is a big concern of mine. I'm just one of five, but that's my biggest concern about the opt-out.
Can I just repeat, just to repeat to make sure I'm clear on your statement? So your concept would be that if Andover decides to execute the opt-out, they would pay the town of North Reading an equivalent in money equal to two years of water revenues?
I think that was just an example.
That was an example.
I mean, the original proposal was five years.
How about if I just use X years of water revenue? That's the concept. Okay. And vice versa, if, let's just say, for the North Reading opts out, it would be half of X year in equivalence in water revenue.
Or X minus Y, and Y would be something to determine.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yeah, please, go right ahead.
I'm trying to be quiet, but I won't be quiet. So I'm going to ask for some indulgence here. It just, you know...
Do I have to put you on the clock, though?
No, probably. Probably, probably.
You have a clock? All right, go ahead.
Probably. But first of all, I want to acknowledge the effort that has been put in by Mr. Slafi and Mrs. Gregory and the town administration up in Andover, along with Mr. Misery, town administrator, Mark Clark, consultants, you know, a whole host. I mean, literally, hundreds, if not thousands, of man-hours have been expended on the negotiations just in the last year. Never mind back in 2014 and before, when we were trying to execute a long-term agreement, IMA with Andover prior to 2014, and we were unable to come to terms and conditions. Again, our board, and again, I can give you the historical perspective, because I've been here a little while, and I'll move it up a little bit. I'll move it up to about 2013 or 14. Again, we had an IMA which had expired with Andover, and we were looking for another long-term agreement. And in addition to that, we had the same issues we have today here in North Reading, and I won't bore you with our issues and problems, but, you know, we needed to address our wells and our ability to produce water here. We certainly already knew that we couldn't produce enough water to sustain ourselves alone. They saw 60, 65% of the water that we consume right now. Our wells are aging. How are we going to invest? What are we going to do? We were looking for a long-term solution. This board and previous boards have been in unanimity in relation to addressing this issue and what we needed to do. We approached Andover and said, we're looking for someone to produce and provide us with 100% of our water. We were told in 2014 that couldn't happen, for whatever reasons. Andover couldn't, wouldn't, didn't want to, didn't have the capacity, didn't believe they had the capacity, couldn't, wouldn't, told us unequivocally. We said, thank you very much, and we executed an interim municipal agreement, interim one, for five years, which was basically an exit strategy for both communities, whereby the town of North Reading agreed to pay higher rates than we would normally have paid, recognizing that as we exit, the ratepayers at Andover would have to absorb that loss, which at the time was about 22% of their revenue stream. And we would be exiting, and we'd pay a little bit higher in order to help them absorb that and build up some surplus to wean themselves off of us as we look for other alternatives. We had then spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, close to millions of dollars, putting together an exit plan, and that alternative, an alternative plan, which is the MWRA. The MWRA, to their credit, has been extremely generous, extremely cooperative, and along with the town of Reading, to meet our needs. And oh, sometime a year and a half ago, you know, through the course of getting all the required and requisite permitting, the DEIR was put out and sent to the town of Andover, where we got a response saying, oh, wait a second, now we can provide you the water. You know, so we went, what's changed? You know, what's changed? In between, we've had three or four different town meetings where we've raised and appropriated money, you know, to move the MWR route forward, all done in public, in the public domain, in town meeting and all. So there's been no secret about it. But once the DEIR got to Andover's hands and they had to respond and comment, and again, I recognize that there's been a change in the administration, a slight change. There were still, there are still three members of the board seated today that were there in 2014, when we had this exit strategy. But it's like, oh my goodness, what's happened here? That we're going to lose 22% of our revenue. And how do we address that? And maybe we can now supply North Reading 100% of their water. So as a result of those comments, we have been forced to reach out and say, what's changed? And since maybe last January, February, about a year ago, a subcommittee was put together, and we've had a lot of discussions about that. And what we consider, again, last June, last June town meeting, we still did not have a clear indication as to whether or not Andover could, would, you know, if we could come to terms with Andover to provide us with 100% of our water. So we, again, still went forward with getting the necessary appropriations to move forward with construction projects, building a new, we appropriated money to purchase land to build a pumping station, and we got all the necessary and requisite permissions and appropriations from our town meeting to move forward with the MWRA. And as I said, ad nauseam, and Paul Lara and Paul, you know, indulge me, North Reading's all set. If I said it once, I said it 100 times. You know, North Reading was all set. We had a path. We had a plan. We were moving forward, and we were all set. And if you wanted to offer us an opportunity, and this is what it was, it's a late 11th-hour opportunity, you would have to get our attention somehow or another. And you did. This board opted to basically postpone for almost a year, from a construction and contract letting standpoint, moving forward with the MWRA in order to properly consider your proposal, because it was worthy of consideration economically, physically. And we have a fiduciary responsibility that we take very seriously, and we're doing it. We have, and we voted unanimously to postpone letting the contracts for construction and reading tie us into the MWRA, because your proposal was certainly worthy of consideration to the extent that we risk increasing our costs. And I will editorialize a little bit now. I'll digress from the facts, per se. Other than, my observations of your meetings over the last couple, last month or so, or since your town meeting, has been extremely distressing for me as a participant to see the discord that's taking place on your board. And again, I wasn't at the meeting tonight, but I did happen to watch the one that was two nights ago. And there still wasn't unanimity on your board as far as understanding what the terms and conditions that were already signed up by four out of five members. And I'm sorry, Mr. Kowalski isn't here, and I'm sorry, Mr. Landry isn't here. And I may say things that may offend them. It's not intentional. My perception as to what's occurred, extremely distressing as far as the discord and lack of concern or unanimity on the board to get this done. You know, and what I hear from some of your members, and I get one member who's not here tonight, is that, you know, this was one of the strongest proponents of the amendment, strongest proponent of renegotiating terms and conditions that were already signed and sent to us in the terms of an extended IMA. It's totally different than what we already agreed to. And then I watched the two nights ago meeting, and he said, this means $78 million to Andover. This is unacceptable. We've got to get this thing done. I don't get it. There's a disconnect for me. I'm missing something here. But that being said, this is a marvelous opportunity for both communities, and we determined that it was worthy of consideration. We negotiated an interim IMA, which incorporated much of which would be included in the 99-year agreement, because we made it very clear as to what our concerns were. And I'll try and be, I'll simplify it. If Andover opts out, you still have your water system, water supply, pump stations, and water for your community. And you have ratepayers who can absorb that increase in rates. North Reading, if Andover opts out, we can't flush our toilets, take a shower, you know, or have a glass of water. So obviously, it is far more concern for us. And we expressed this to Mr. Slafi and Mrs. Gregory, and they heard us loud and clear. Again, what's happened on your side of the table, we can't, we can't help you. So obviously, the opt-out, we opted out on, you know, to make it quite simple. You know, we were not looking to opt out. We're looking for a permanent solution. And I heard Mr. Kowalski say, oh, there's a 10-year sign-up with the MWRA. That's a perfunctory issue, administrative issue, that doesn't even come before the local boards, city councils, boards of selectmen, or anything else that's signed off by town managers, mayors, or anybody else as a perfunctory task. This is like, and nobody has ever been thrown out of the MWRA. So there is permanency there. We're not worried about it. We're not concerned about it. What we are concerned about, and I think we made it quite clear in the subcommittee, is the people that are sitting negotiating this deal for your side and our side are not going to be here for a long time, and some of us not for very long at all. There's an election coming up in May, you know, so we'll see. and some of us not for very long at all. There's an election coming up in May, you know, so we'll see.
Could have all blanks it.
No, no, truly. So, you know, what we're concerned about on our side of the table was, we don't want our future boards to have to deal with your future boards. We want it very clear as to what the agreement is going to be and what it is, period, for a 99-year period. We don't want to have, have to saddle our communities, both communities, with exactly what we're dealing with right now. That being said, in relation to your proposals, I think one of the first mistakes that's being made here is, and again, we didn't do it on this side of the table deliberately and intentionally. We asked our voters to trust this board to negotiate a long-term agreement, not asking them to negotiate it on town meeting floor. Not one aspect of this agreement was ever asked to get a consensus of the town meeting vote as to what they would be. We asked them to trust us to look out for the town's best interest for the next 100 years. And it was unanimous. It was unanimous, because that's not the place to negotiate it. We have spent hundreds of hours talking over the concerns and the issues related to a long-term agreement. You can't do it in 20 seconds or 20 minutes on a town meeting floor. We asked them to trust us, and they did. What happened up in your community, they started to negotiate it on town meeting floor. It's a loser, because was this that issue, then it's another issue, or, you know, someone doesn't like it. You know, I heard Mr. Kowalski say, "I wasn't even aware that we're going to be paying North Reading $92,000 or $93,000 a year, you know, under the IMA agreement that he just voted to extend, you know, for the next two years or three years." Well, that was part of the deal. And part of the deal was, the result of Andover's action in stating to us in 2014 that you were unable to provide us with 100 percent of our water caused us to go in a different direction, caused us to spend close to $2 million to get to where we are today, to get ready to let contracts up. So as you come to us at the 11th hour, we stated to the subcommittee, and I'll state it here, that you bear some responsibility for the costs that we have incurred because of the decision you made. And you agreed. That's right. It's the right thing to do. But we're talking about a 100-year contract. We said, "You know what? We can quantify right now $953,000 that we have spent because of a decision that you made that forced us to go down this route. So pay us back over 10 years." And you could do it in the form of a credit on the water bill. It's not like count out the cash. Credit on the water bill. Keeping in mind that North Reading, when we buy 100 percent of our water from your people, is paying 30 percent of our own bill. We're paying 30 percent of whatever you're collecting there. So we're paying ourselves back, too. But again, it is more than a token gesture. It is an acceptance of responsibility for the actions that were previously taken that caused us to go down this route. And it was a good and fair agreement. But in addition to that, we voted unanimously and put forth to our town meeting last October, was it June? I forget. But June or October, an additional $300,000 to pay our consultants to analyze your system and your ability, doing our due diligence, to deliver what you said you could do. We're not just taking your word for it. So an additional $300,000 is being spent to analyze your system and to prove that what you're saying is true. And we didn't ask you for a dime for that, but 10 cents. You know, so for Mr. Kowalski, and again, I'm sorry they're not here. Maybe they're English majors and not math majors. I don't know. But, you know, we didn't ask for that money back. So it's extremely frustrating. Again, as an advocate for the discussions, the negotiations, the coming to an agreement, I'm frustrated that you're setting yourselves up to ask your town meeting to negotiate some of the terms and conditions through a vote or through a blessing. You can have all the discussions you want in public, but the vote can't tie your hands. It doesn't work, because after all the discussion, and after the people who spent hundreds of hours negotiating, understanding the nuances as to how the system works, what the delivery's going to be, well, you know, what North Reading's going to get. And again, some of your public thinks that we're getting a good deal. We're a wholesale buyer. We've got two entrances to Andover, Central Street and Main Street. From there on in, Andover owns nothing and has no responsibility. We have costs to maintain our system. Our ratepayers are still going to be paying more than Andover's ratepayers because of the need to maintain our system. But that, they don't, they didn't get that at your town meeting. They didn't, it wasn't clear. It was very, it was clear that it wasn't clear to them. They think that we're getting a better deal. And again, Mr. Kowalski, I appreciate you being up on the big board, being quoted, but, you know, it was taken out of context, and it wasn't true. But...
But Mr. Misery, the only thing I'll say on that is the only thing that was changed wasn't the financial model. It was the, it was the outpiece, which I know was...
Was the what?
Was the outpiece. There wasn't anything changed or suggested.
I understand that. And again, my interpretation of what occurred in Andover is different than some members of my board and some members of your board.
Yeah, I'm just talking about what happened at the town meeting.
Your, your town meeting agreed to a 99-year deal, and they wanted an opt-out, some type of clause. And that's not an unreasonable expectation, given their lack of information and knowledge and understanding of the, of our position and the need for our, need for permanency. So, and again, when we're talking about some of the details that you were just asked tonight to make an offer-type of thing in relation to, you know, Andover's, if Andover opts out, obviously, it should be more costly than if North Reading does, because, as I said, we don't have any water. You still have it. That shouldn't even be, I don't care about that. To me, and Mr. Misery and I were talking the other day, it should be by mutual agreement. We're not breaking up this marriage unless it's by mutual agreement. Some catastrophic event takes place, it's out of our hands anyway. But for us to have some permanency, we have to have an equal say. You say yes, we say no. It's no. You say yes, we say yes. We're out. We say no, and nope, this is a wonderful thing. We can talk about it every year. But unless we agree, both parties agree, it's that simple. It is that simple. And to me, allowing your town meeting to negotiate terms and conditions is an absolute mistake. You know, now, we originally talked about having a special town meeting in December, but you had some other issues that were coming up. Your other issues turned into 14 articles, which stimulated an awful lot of discussion and an awful lot of differences of opinion, shall we say.
Anxiety comes to mind.
Huh?
Anxiety is a word I would use a lot of it.
If this were a standalone issue, I don't believe there's anybody in the town of Andover that's opposed to selling water to North Reading and keeping their rates down by 30 percent, other than Mr. Kowalski. He thinks you don't pay enough, and, you know, you're below the Miramac Valley, you know, average, 22 or 24 percent, so it's okay if the Andover rates go up 24 percent. Obviously, he's not running for reelection, you know. But, okay. If that's his position, I respect it. I may not agree with him, don't understand it, but that's okay. But really, I think if you're, if you're asking us to allow you an opportunity to clean up the language to mirror ours, as was originally proposed, it needs to be a standalone by itself, quickly done, one water, one article warrant, and you can do it. Open it and close it, as opposed to what you did before, and I've got 14 articles at a special town meeting. We don't even do that. And we've, we've made some pretty silly mistakes over the years, but bizarre. So, you know, to me, we were going to have that in December, and we didn't get it. And I expressed my concern about that. But respecting, people have to make your decision. But as a result of making that decision, here we sit. Now, is this deal worth salvaging? I will say it again. North Reading is all set as far as providing long-term water to our community. We are. MWR is just waiting for it. Reading's ready to go. Appropriation is in place. Nothing has changed. Is this still worth considering? Again, to me, the biggest concern, the economics aside, and I kept saying it to Mr. Slafi even privately, it's not the money. While money is important, is important, permanency, excuse my language, lack of bullshit going forward, dealing, one board dealing with another board is more important. We need water. We're going to get water. We need to provide water, not for our current needs, but also our future needs. And we have two choices right now. You came in at the 11th hour and offered us an opportunity, but we told you what our parameters need to be. We're ready, willing, and able to go to the MWRRA, and we recognize, and I thank Mr. Kowalski again for doing his math, you know, that it's going to cost us more. We know that. I would suggest to you, members of the board that are here and the ones that aren't here, worry about the decision you have to make. Don't worry about ours. We know what our decisions are. We recognize them. We have them quantified, and we've already made some decisions. And the last decision we made was, let's consider this, because it's a good opportunity, not only to get the long-term supply for the foreseeable future and beyond, but also at a more reasonable cost. But it's not the money. So you have to sell that to your community. You have to sell it to your board first. This should be unanimous. I don't get it, but that's okay. There's differences of opinion here every week. But there's a mutual respect here as far as our opinions and why we came to those conclusions. I think I've said enough.
Thank you. I was articulate very well.
But again, I think it's still worthy of consideration, depending upon what move you make, and the timeline is extremely short. We have to move forward. We've already decided to postpone for an entire construction season our projects with the, with the MWRRA. That cost us money. We haven't asked you a dime for a dime for it. We did that because it was worth considering. And now we get the stupid monkey wrench that got thrown in here unnecessarily, in my estimation.
Mr. Misery. Thank you, Mr. Lara.
So the way I look at it, town meeting passed the original article with an amendment. The original article takes care of the 99 years to the legislature. So it's this amendment that's the problem. And if, if you take that amendment up, have a special town meeting as soon as possible, convince the public to remove that amendment or create some language that nullifies it, whatever it takes from a legal point of view. Then we can continue the negotiations and deal with some of those issues. You know, what Steve mentioned earlier, is, yeah, we can, we can put something in there that when both sides want to bring up an issue, they bring them up. And if they both agree, then we move forward with whatever it is. And, you know, I think that's the right way to run this. Water is critical to the town of North Reading. And at the end of 20 years, you decide, something's come up, and goodbye, North Reading. We've got to go back through all of this at a higher expense and hope that, one, the MWRRA will provide the water, and the town of Reading be willing at that point in time to allow transport of the water to the town.
Dig up their streets.
Right. So that's the dilemma that we're in. And, you know, as I said earlier, I've been involved with this for a long time, and it seems to me one simple little thing has to be done to move this thing forward. And if it can't be done, and it can't be done in a reasonable period of time, because the rest of the board members have to agree, then we're just wasting our time. We have to move on, one way or the other.
Mrs. Menupalli?
Is there any thought of that? I mean, I don't, I don't even know if legally speaking, you can just simply go back with the same article you just went to and say, "Well, we're doing it without the amendment now." And I don't know that that would be resoundingly received based on the last town meeting.
It's a possibility. We're talking through the legal mechanisms now.
And I'm going to just add a little one on this, too. You talked about your little opt-out clause scenario. You know, to me, I'm not sure how you could have an obligation without an appropriation, how you could force us into a position of agreeing that we would pay you X amount of dollars and not having appropriation. That means we would have to go and appropriate that, appropriate that money and put it away somewhere so that when that rainy day comes, we have it. And you would have to be saying...
I would assume it would have to be subject to, subject to appropriation.
Yeah, I mean, so just think, so I think now you're, now you're hurt. I think if you step back and just think about what you're proposing, you know, I think your common heads need to prevail here. And I think the biggest issue that you have is, it goes back to you're not on the same page, and I'm not sure you're listening. Mr. Larry, that speech that he just gave was so accurate. But you know what? I've heard him say this speech before to you in this very room, a year ago. You know, if I had to play the tapes side by side, the words would match up a year ago. Mr. Schultz, are you all set?
Well, I was, and I was, I actually wanted to sort of clarify some of the, some of the, I guess, proposed options besides that being, that being suggested, or Steve and Bob's suggestion, opt-out is only if we're both in agreement to opt-out. But that, that requires you to basically go back to your town and say, "Would you do this again?" I just don't understand why they would say yes to that, because they just voted on it. But I don't see any, what would be, what's different now that wasn't different back then. But in terms, just in terms of that sort of opt-out penalty, sort of in exploring that opt-out penalty as well, I, I was, I'm trying to clarify, Selectwoman Gregory, you're saying, and maybe all of you saying, "We're not renegotiating that summary of terms. We're just trying to figure out or sort out an option for that opt-out, that non-permanent solution for us," right? We're not going to go back to the drawing board on all the terms that we had, we, we actually, you signed, and we actually approved or voted to ratify here, right? You're just, you're just, you're just going back to your voters, or potentially going back to your voters on that one issue of the lack of permanency that, that you're trying to address through these creative options.
Yes, we're not looking to renegotiate all of the terms at all. We worked hard to get those. And I, I, I agreed with them. I signed the, I think I even moved the motion when we did it. And I think that we need to stick with those, but we need to address the issues raised by our town meeting voters, which, as we've said, I think are in part because we didn't give the information out to them in the way that we needed to. And we're exploring many ways to do that. But I think also that you phrase a number of issues that we need to discuss a little bit to figure out where we can, can go from here and talk to town council, who's at the end of the table here. So if we could maybe take a short break so that we could do that, would that be something that would be acceptable?
Absolutely. If you're requesting a, should we take a recess?
Resess.
How long would you like?
10 minutes?
Yeah, 10 minutes would be enough.
We're going to give you 15. We're going to give you 15 minutes.
Thank you.
We're going to take a recess for 15 minutes.
Well, thank you for accepting my request to take a, take a break. I think we're ready now to reconvene. You had no opportunities. Did you have enough time? 15 minutes better than 10?
I don't know. 12 and a half would have done it. Spare a negotiation.
So please, I'll turn the floor back over to Andover.
Selectwoman Gregory has been taking notes from all of our meeting here, so we're going to try to get her to, to give you what we just...
Take your time. We don't have to rush.
I guess we needed more than 12 and a half minutes.
That's okay.
Thank you for giving us some time to figure out a plan. And here's what we would like to propose. We've heard what you've had to say, and I understand your frustration, not to the degree because I'm a new arrival in this, but I understand and join you in, in some of it. But what we propose to do is, we have a meeting on Monday night, and we propose to call a one-item special town meeting where the only issue would be this, and that on Monday, we will, the board will vote on this. It'll be on the agenda, which we will post tomorrow. And we'd be targeting a March 29 date. I don't think we can confirm tonight on it, on the date, but we can confirm that on Monday for the meeting. And this would give us enough time to meet both the rules on the special town meeting and to give us some time to educate our voters on all of the things that we... on all of the things that we didn't do as good a job on educating them before. We have a commitment to get this done. And then we would have a vote on language that would give the board the ability to negotiate the terms with you, hopefully, by the end of that meeting. And we feel that this would be a quick way to do it, but would also to address your issues as well as ours, and would also give us an adequate time to provide the education to our voters, which we didn't do as good a job as we should have before. And I guess what we're looking for from you is whether this is an acceptable proposal for North Reading to continue the discussion.
Mr. O'Leary?
Just from the timeline that we established ourselves a few months ago, when we said we would make a decision, you know, sometime in April. I mean, that sort of fits within the timeline. And I know, based upon our discussions, most recent discussions at our board meetings, based upon the frustration with what occurred at Andover's town meeting, we're talking about maybe making something, a decision as soon as this coming Monday night. And again, I don't have to tell anybody in this room, this is a decision which is going to have a significant impact on both communities for the next hundred years. So, you know, I think to provide Andover the opportunity, which is still within our April timeline. And again, the outcome of that town meeting certainly will indicate whether or not there'll be movement forward or not. If the town meeting doesn't support the article, then, you know, then we have a decision to make, which I think is already, we've made clear as to what our position is. So, I, for one, would be amenable to providing the opportunity to allow the discussions to move forward. Because it's a short, short time period. It's within the time period that we had already discussed and agreed to. And I say, we're gonna go forward.
Mr. Messeri?
I would suggest one additional thing. And that is, if they decide on Monday night to go forward with a special town meeting in the timeframe, give or take whatever days fit within getting a place to have the meeting, et cetera, that our committees that have been negotiating and talking begin talking based on an assumption that your town meeting will allow you to do what we would like to see done. That way, we wouldn't be losing that time. Right? And then, the town meeting votes it down, we know exactly what we're gonna do, and we'll still be within the April date. That's what I would recommend.
I just have a couple of questions. When's your reelections?
Twenty-seven.
And that Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, so it's two days after. We need the entire month to, for education.
So, let's think about this. You'll have potentially two new board members with two days under their belt going to town meetings to support an article?
The recommendation would be for that because we'd have to have our FinCom book out. So, we'd have to have that book out probably.
I'm sorry, Alex, I can't hear you.
Sorry, I apologize. We would have to have a formal vote by the board well before that to get the finance committee letter out to our citizens. Usually, that's done at least a week in advance. So, we would, we would have to have that out in that board vote, most likely, let's say, the seventeenth or so of March, to get it in the voters' hands with the set of recommendations as part of the outreach. It's, you know, just the customary mechanics of it.
Additionally, I would suggest that having the campaign going on during the month that we're trying to educate people will actually raise the awareness of the issue. I suspect it will be involved in, for example, the candidate debates and things like that, so that that will help people to be aware of the issue and to hopefully come to terms with the particulars and understand what they're voting for on that special town meeting.
I would hope that your candidates take the time to talk to subcommittee members to become fully informed as to what the discussion is, rather than what we've witnessed at your public meetings for current seated members who don't seem to have a clear understanding.
A couple of them have reached out to me, certainly.
And to me as well.
Okay.
I'm just, I understand what you're saying, that you're gonna ask your, the article's gonna say you're gonna give the board, the townspeople will give the board the permission to negotiate the terms. But you're going back to your townspeople to say, we're taking out the opt-out. You're gonna be telling your townspeople that, right?
It's the same article that was in this prior town meeting.
That's correct. I mean, what you're saying is correct, that we would be.
So, rescinding the amended article.
Would be reasserting the original article before the amendment. And we feel that if they had more information and understood the results of it, of their decision, that the decision might be different. It might be the same. I mean, obviously, we can't predict what it would, what it would be. And we will do our best to get the information to our voters and to help them to understand why all five people on the board are in favor of this. But, you know, obviously, they can vote however they like when it comes to the meeting.
So, what time's your meeting on Monday evening?
Seven o'clock.
So, this is what I'm gonna propose. We're gonna make a decision on Monday evening. We're not gonna make a decision tonight because that's not what we agreed to do as a board. And I'd like to propose that we, allow us to go back and have our meeting on Monday evening at seven o'clock. And we, if you could hold off on your agenda, the subject until eight o'clock, and we'll make, we'll make a decision between seven and eight on Monday, and we'll notify you. We'll take a recess from our meeting to allow our town manager to call you, Mr. Flanagan, and let you know what this board decides. And so, we have between now and Monday to think about what you're saying and what you're, how you're gonna approach this. But I will leave you with my concern. My concern is that you'll have two open seats. You saw how your town meeting went with one person against us. If we have two people that are running for election that are mostly, they could get elected, and you have two people on town meeting floor that are only, that are only gonna be in that position for two days, could really turn this into, it could be a very challenging setting. So, I don't know who's running. I don't know anything about the people, how they feel about this whole subject. But I just want you, and I'm not looking for a response. I just want you to know my concern that I have. Okay? I was at your town meeting, and I heard the people stand up and applaud when, I believe, it was Mr. Flanagan, when you explained to them that if you do this, they most likely won't accept this. And they stood up and applauded. It's very, very concerning. So, it's a big challenge, but I just want you to have my concern. Any board member want to say anything else? Mr. Schultz?
If I may, I know one of the problems that I've had with this whole subject and voters in my town have come to me with this is, they kind of seen the articles, and they've seen some of the videos of your last few meetings. And I'm trying to be fair here, but they've been pretty dysfunctional. And it's hard for us to, as a board, like, and I'm not trying to throw stones. I'm just telling you with my thought process, I think it's important you understand our mindset. Like, how can we negotiate with that when people are acting that way? So, I mean, it would be helpful, when you guys do bring this up, to, you know, some of your meetings have kind of been off the rails. And I, that has been a problem with me personally, and people like, how can you negotiate with that? So, I just, I don't, I'm not trying to throw stones, but I think, in fairness, I have to say that because that is kind of how I feel and how a lot of voters feel in this town, so.
All I can say to that is that I agree we've had some civility problems. And I would like to think I'm not a part of that. And I'm doing my best and continuing to do my best to minimize that and to be as professional, both myself and to assist the board in being as professional as possible. And I would say Alex has done the same. And that hopefully, Monday was an exceptional circumstance and that we will be able to move forward. I think our meeting today, the, earlier today where you were present, was a very professional meeting. And although Dan only participated briefly by phone because of work issues, all five of the selectmen did support the contract with North Reading to sell water. So, that I don't anticipate it's going to be an issue between this group of selectmen. If the change in the board is a particular concern, because we will at least have one seat that changes on March twenty-seventh, we could consider a date prior to the election. Again, we can't specify a date tonight because we need to figure out what's available and those sorts of things. But we do wanna make sure to have enough time to provide the education so that we aren't in a situation that we arguably were in before where we didn't have adequate background. I would also suggest that at the special town meeting, because of another issue that was part of that meeting, there were a lot of townspeople that were very upset and agitated, which did not help the atmosphere of the entire meeting. And I'm extremely confident that that would not be the case with a single issue involving the water agreement between the two towns.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Gilberto, I looked at our schedule. I didn't see our agenda posted. But what time is our discussion for this supposed to take place?
So, we were, in the draft agenda that I forwarded earlier this evening, we were looking at a six-thirty start time with a brief executive session, and then going into open session at approximately six-forty-five. And between then and the beginning of budget hearings in seven-thirty, I believe, the draft agenda called for this item to be taken up, the issue of water, wastewater.
So, we could make a decision and then notify them before. Do you have other things on your agenda that evening?
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes, we have, we have a number of things on the agenda on Monday.
So, we asked you to hold off on this subject until after we notify you?
Right. I don't think that would be a problem. We'll just have to make sure our agenda reflects the appropriate times and sort of the work.
I haven't finalized the agenda times yet, so I can perfectly adjust it.
Is there any more questions? Anyone from the audience that questions, concerns? Any other board members? Mrs. Minipelli?
I actually just wanted to thank you, Selectwoman Gregory and Mr. Flanagan, because you both did speak up at the town meeting. And, you know, that, that was important, and that was relevant. And I also think that Selectman Kowalski was pretty vocal about making sure this option to get out was included as a part of this. So, is his decision different? I didn't watch the meetings. I haven't watched the meetings, and I didn't see the meeting this evening. So, I don't know if he's, I know, I can understand we're all for a long-term agreement. But has he changed his position on that opt-out provision?
Well, first of all, thank you. And I'm very much in favor of the argument, which is why I went and, and made the argument and felt it was important to speak personally in favor of it because I think it's a benefit to the pocketbook of every single ratepayer in town. And second of all, we need to be good neighbors. We need to maintain a good relationship with all of our neighbors. And it needs to be handled, whether, whether or not this works out, and I really hope it does, I am glad that we're given the chance to at least make it clear that some of the things that were said by the members of our town do not reflect the sentiment of the vast majority of people in town. Where we're happy to be North Reading's neighbor, and I hope we can continue to provide you with, with water. As far as Mr. Kowalski, I certainly can't get into his head. He has done a bunch of analysis on the numbers and has provided a number of Excel spreadsheets to all of us on the value of continuing this and how we need to make sure to enter into this agreement and that it's very important. So, I would suggest that he is on board to agree with, to go forward with the contract. As far as, you know, particulars of an opt-out, I don't think that's, I can't, I can't speak for him, so I just don't know. But he did say strongly at our meeting today, where it was clear that we were speaking about this issue that was raised by the voters, that he was strongly in favor in entering into an agreement and that it needs to be done. So, I, I think that he's gonna be on board with it.